We have a forum.
Okay, start her up.
All right. I'll call this meeting. Us, the Water Board and Trustees, special meeting to order. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
Move.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And the agenda is approved. Okay, agenda item number two is consideration discussion of entering into agreement with Burns and Rupke for executive search to fill general manager's position.
And we have in attendance Kristy Staggs and Katie McCracken from Burns and Rupke.
Hi.
Ladies are in our spots at the table, so if you want to come in and join us.
Hi, I'm Kristy Staggs, owner of Burns and Rupke. Nice to meet you, everyone.
And I'm Katie McCracken.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Okay, we do have a couple folders here that we can pass out to you. See, you want to pass one on that way? I'm pulling that one. Awesome. All right, well, you'll probably see a couple things in here. I know Chad and I were corresponding over email a couple of times, and I'd sent a couple documents to him. I don't know if he'd pass those on to anybody, but you'll see a couple of those things here on the right side. And just some more information about Burns and Rupke and what we do as a whole, and then a little just company letter just to Chad, giving us, giving you guys a little bit more information. And some other information on the other side here, just with our retained search program, our schedule and fees. And we did put together a couple contracts, if you wanted to just take a look at that as well, just to see, since we do have two different levels of retained searches that we provide.
And maybe just to give everyone an overview, I'm not sure if everyone is familiar with our company as a whole, but we're an executive search firm located out of Waterloo, Iowa. We are a nationwide recruiting agency, so work heavily throughout Iowa and the Midwest, but really are nationwide. So work on contingency searches, we do retained searches with municipalities, we work heavily in manufacturing, kind of all across the board. So we can work on any positions from the lower end positions up to executive level roles. We have been in business for over 30 years, successfully placing across the board. Katie is one of our top recruiters, so works heavily across the board on many different roles and positions. So we just recently completed a similar search with the Waterloo Waterworks Board. Have done a couple of others.
So we've heard. Thanks so much.
So familiar with that. So that's kind of just a general, a little bit about us. I myself have been with the company for 22 years, took ownership over about a year ago. Katie has been with the company for over five years, so both of us have been in recruiting for quite a few years.
So Katie, would you be the recruiter for this position?
I would be, yes.
Okay.
And so you've been doing this for five years primarily for municipalities, or you mentioned that you do manufacturing as well. Is it all over the, more of a broad spectrum that you do recruiting for?
Yeah, it would be more of a broad spectrum, but I have worked on a general manager position for municipalities two or three times.
Okay.
Guess before we go on, any other questions in general about us, our agency, or?
For the fees, just to clarify, so section one there, I understand 30% of whatever the annual salary would be, and then under letter A there, is that in addition to that 30%?
So we can walk you through the two different retained search programs that we have.
Okay.
They're two separate ones. So the first one that you're looking at there is a retained search program. So that is a 30% fee of the annual base salary, and then this just kind of breaks down the retained portion of it. So there's an engagement fee, so one, two, or three, depending on what the comp range is you're looking at for this individual to start. That's kind of what that engagement fee is there. So if it's under that $75,000 range, that engagement fee would be that $5,000. And then the balance is due once we identify a candidate for you. So that's kind of the retained search.
So that's the retained.
Yes. The second one, the exclusive retain, the difference there is, so the retained is, let's say you were going to do some work on this role on your own, and you identified a candidate on your own, we would just be, oh, the initial engagement fee, and then you would obtain your candidate. The second, the exclusive retain, which is similar to what we just completed, is, you know, if you don't want to take any part with that, you're not going to do any advertising or direct recruiting on your own, we take control of all that. If a candidate surfaces, so Waterloo, they did have an internal candidate, but they vetted back to us, and we went through the process. So that would be the difference in the exclusive retain is, everything would go through us.
Gotcha.
It's just the kind of difference between the two programs.
So option one, we could conduct our own search?
You could, yes.
Yes.
Correct. If you wanted to, yes, go about doing that and all of that, correct. And if you identified a candidate. The second process, you know, we'll do, and Katie can explain to you a little bit more about how we conduct our search, we would completely do everything. You know, a lot of companies or organizations like yourself does not want to, you know, take handle of that, or do any of the advertising, or vetting of candidates, or finding them, searching for them, taking them through the process. So we would do all of that, is kind of the difference between the two.
Right. So you have some methods of searching for candidates specific to water department, general manager position. What would be the best, what do you have that would be a good way of finding those candidates?
Sure. Well, I guess one thing that I know that we did with Waterloo recently, and what we've done in the past, is we do post, and on, I think, the classified pages of the four different associations in Iowa, the AWWA, AM, AA, IA of you, sorry, got tongue tied there, the Iowa Rural as well, and then there was Iowa League of Cities as well. We posted on all four of those sites. We do some of our own job boards that we're a part of, you know, currently, like ZipRecruiter or Indeed, or a couple of those others as well. Then we do LinkedIn and some of our own direct recruiting as well.
Okay. So you use some of the national line methods as well?
Yes, because it's the big, yeah.
Yep. So you cast away that, and then it would be up to you to vet those candidates to see if they meet qualifications we're after.
Correct. And we would screen every candidate before presenting them to you, to make sure, you know, they're looking, they meet your set qualifications. We won't just throw paper. We'll make sure that they all follow the requirements that you're looking for.
So if it's a local candidate or somewhat local, we like to try and meet with them in person, so we'll try and arrange that. Otherwise, we will do multiple, you know, phone interviews. We've done Skype type calls in the past, but yes, we will completely and thoroughly screen a candidate against your specifications or job description before we submit a candidate to you.
And your process for determining what we're looking for, how do you do that?
Sure. Well, we do have a general job description, I mean, that we had used just recently with Waterloo, so we can certainly use that general job description. We could, you know, talk and discuss that as well with you, and maybe some specifications that you're looking for, characteristics, and that's something that we could do together in a meeting and go from there. It's up to you what you would like to do as well.
So in terms of knowing what Brad is thinking, or what I am thinking, how do you, do you do that in one big meeting, or are there individual discussions that take place?
So depending on how you would like the interview process to go, we will tailor that to your needs. So whether it's an initial phone interview, whether you want to just set up an initial onsite, you know, meeting, we will tailor this process to how you would like the interview process to go.
So I think we have, our goals are to get the best person that we possibly can, but also to spend our members' money wisely.
Sure, definitely, yeah.
So we had some discussion last time. The hurdle you got to get me over is, I understand if we're interviewing for a job, that there are 6,000 people that are qualified for. The GM job, I think there's a really small pool of people out there that have the qualifications to do this. So the hurdle you got to get me over is, what will you guys do to find those people that we can't? Because the meeting last, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely.
If we reach out to the, to the, to the four folks that you talked about, put on our, on their website, what are you going to do to get people that we can't, since that's such a small?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have many different ways that we do our direct recruiting. So we have had similar positions in the past, so we do have a large in-house database of them. So we first and foremost use our database. Who do we already have that maybe has some of this background that you guys are looking for? Then, you know, as Katie kind of mentioned, we have many direct means of direct recruiting, so we will actually do direct recruiting. You know, reach out to similar candidates. We have many different job boards and advertising methods that we can do as well, and then we really, you know, go after referrals. So if we talk to an individual that says, hey, I don't really want to relocate from such and such location, you know, we're always asking for referrals. Well, who do you know, or who, you know, do you know in your network that maybe have been matched or may like this location? So we have many different resources that we use, besides kind of the job boards and advertising, direct recruiting, referrals, we have many different options that we utilize.
And then just kind of follow up, because you've done this recently in Waterloo, we were trying to get a grasp, how many applications do you foresee? And then, like, for them, how many did you narrow it down to bring in front of the board, really qualified first applications?
Sure. There is quite a bit, big number that maybe I even just screened myself. I think once, I mean, there was even a number that I didn't even present to the board for Waterloo Waterworks, that I just felt wasn't the right fit, just based on the different qualifications that either they had that didn't quite meet what the specifications Waterloo Waterworks was not, was looking for. I probably presented six candidates that we decided to move forward with to Waterloo Waterworks. There were a couple of other candidates that I had submitted to them, that they had decided no interest before we even went on in the process, but there were six strong candidates that they had decided to move forward with, with the whole interview process.
So how many folks did you screen out to get to that six?
I'm not sure if I even have a number.
Forty, fifty plus.
Okay.
Right. I was gonna say, I don't know how specific, but yes, it would be quite a few.
So you have an immediate pool of people that size, forty to fifty people, that you could start screening right away?
That we would just start calling, making sure they're still available, if they're looking, if they relocate, yes.
There were some that were only wanting that Waterloo area, there were some others that Katie had targeted that, you know, maybe would like the Des Moines area, or, you know, the South Salusa surrounding area, as opposed to the previous location. We didn't want to.
Okay. And if we go local, state, how many of those were local versus nationwide?
The six candidates, you mean, that we used for Waterloo? I would say four of them were in that Cedar Valley area, and two of them would have relocated.
And another added piece that, you know, we can do, so we will completely screen, we'll provide you their background information, kind of why they left previous employment, you know, compensation range, what they're looking for, targeted relocation that they're looking at. In turn, you know, as we get closer to the selection of your top two or three candidates or such, we can conduct reference checks, you know, background checks, we can provide any of that background information as well.
With those activities coming in, additional fee, or is that?
No, that would be included, if that is something you have to do, yes.
And is, assuming that we go through the process and we don't find a candidate that we want in this, maybe either first round or whatever, so the payment that we do is at the end of finding a candidate that we want, right?
Correct. So final payment we do on successfully identifying a candidate and completing the search, yes. So if we submit three candidates, let's say this first round, you were not interested in any of those, you give us feedback as to why those candidates, you know, did not match, or what you did not like about those candidates. That will help us kind of retailer our search, kind of retailer on our end, our search parameters, and then we would present you a second round of candidates.
I see value in, if you can speak to this, I mean, because I heard what we're going with it. I see value in the exclusive, because I think it will probably have an internal candidate, but at least you can put them through and give us feedback from a neutral standpoint of maybe they would or maybe they wouldn't get through your rounds.
Sure.
I think that's all. I know it looks cheaper to not do that, but yeah. I see value in turning everything over to them.
Yeah, to avoid potential biases, or having third party candidates rather than?
Well, I think that they would be held to the same standard.
Correct. Okay, all right. Everybody goes through the same process.
And we would get the same feedback from the same neutral source.
Okay.
Not positive or negative, I just think that's a good thing that all candidates go through the same process.
So since you have two different contracts, is there, I assume that's come out of history, that some firms want one way versus the other way? Is there a preference, as do most firms choose the retained versus the exclusive, or is it 50/50, or it depends on the situation?
There is, yeah. Correct. And I would say, you know, it's probably been a toss-up of what we've done, honestly. I would say the majority probably does the exclusive retain. When you're at this caliber of a role, you have decided you are going to go a retained search, you, you know, completely want to kind of turn it over, and we orchestrate it all, and then provide you the set of talent suit interview. But either option, you'll get the same, basically the same sort of services from us.
Sure. And I know the Waterloo Waterworks, they always chose exclusive retained, because they did not have an HR department. They didn't have somebody on staff to be able to dedicate the time to screen, interview, and, you know, go through all of that process, so that's why they chose that. So then we take all of that relief from you, and we do all of those duties from you, and, you know, we give, we're able to give you, you know, those qualified candidates without taking all of your time as well.
And everybody's going through the same process.
Yeah. So we can, yeah, I mean, certainly walk you through any of these documents, I know it might look like a lot.
Yes.
Really, where do we see starting? Are we above or below that 125?
Are you asking where I'm at? Because I'm below that.
Where are you?
Right here, no, I'm below the 125.
Right.
My position.
But even if somebody came in with your experience?
Well, I think that's for the group to decide.
No, I know that, but you're just below.
No, I'm at like 115 something, almost 116.
I'm just trying to gauge.
Here.
And that dovetails into a question I've got. So in terms of the fee, it's calculated off of the salary that is paid to the employee, so the benefit package is not considered part of it.
Correct. If there's a bonus at all, or benefits, that is not included, just the per share base annual salary.
You said one girl, the top of the con. Okay, how long do you guarantee a candidate?
I guess that could be negotiable. I mean, we don't really have a set guarantee necessarily. Yeah, I don't really.
Have you done guarantees in the past?
Yes.
What do they look like?
Well, this last time with the Waterloo Waterworks, I think that one was a six-month guarantee, because we knew the caliber of, you know, this position or this opening that was a six-month guarantee, but we are negotiable.
And if something were to happen within the six months, then we start over and don't owe the fee.
Correct. We would replace that.
Yeah, we would replace them.
Usually our guarantee periods have been anywhere from 30 days to probably the six month that's been.
Six months, yes.
Of that.
Negotiable.
Yes. I know, that's, I mean, we don't have a set standard, that's why. I'm like, well, you know.
And I know you're talking 30-day turnaround to having candidates in front of us, correct?
Yes.
And it should probably be sooner than that.
And we're on a bit of a time crunch.
Absolutely.
Since you've already, since you've already had this, I mean, you perceive that being faster, and I guess probably a hybrid, or two weeks you can say, okay, we've reached out to them, we know, we may add a couple of these.
I think two weeks is a reasonable amount of time to audition candidates.
Yeah. And then if I were to send you, you know, X amount of candidates, then the next day I could talk to another candidate, and I would also present that one to you as well. It won't be, I hit a certain number, and then I stop sending you candidates that are interested. I would continuously give them to you until you identified a candidate that you were interested in.
So I guess we continue the search until we know a search is filled. So just because you're interviewing somebody or send an offer doesn't necessarily mean that individual will accept. So we are continuing our search efforts on our end and identifying additional candidates that we can provide.
But especially candidates within the department here may not have been interested in the Waterloo position, but they may be interested in this position, right?
Sure.
So there may be a few more added individuals from the pool from the initial searching.
Correct. And that search was, you know, X number of months ago, so now there may be new individuals looking, it's getting close to the end of the school year, individuals with families might be ready to make a move now.
So all this would be coordinated through Chad, the whole presenting of candidates and arranging of meetings and interviews, or?
If that's how you choose to do.
Whatever you guys would like.
Yeah, to do.
As long as it happens while I'm still here.
Right.
Yes. Yes. I will do whatever I can to help facilitate that process.
Any additional questions, or anything else we can walk you through regarding any of the documents? So on the right side was more just general information about our agency as a whole. The left side was information more pertaining to the retained search. And then we did, yes, include a couple of contract agreements. If we should agree on it, or you decide to move forward with us, we can certainly get something in place today to move forward.
Do you have examples from other possible job searches you've done that could help guide us in putting together jobs?
Yeah, we can absolutely help you with that. So even if you provide us information, or kind of bullet points, or verbal information of what you're looking for in a candidate, we can put together a job description for you too.
Well, and I think we know what we're looking for, but I think it's always good to have ideas of maybe what Waterloo asked on top of that, that maybe we're forgetting to.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think Katie?
I just didn't know if that was confidential, and you can't?
No.
Oh, no.
And Katie did bring that, so we do have their job description, if you're interested in seeing that. And then you can broaden on that, or change anything. And then what we can do is, Katie can develop a job description for you and send that over to, send you guys to approve.
Sure. The difference here, I believe, you're here on the water there, correct?
Correct.
So, get the waste water saved here.
Okay, sure.
And I had shared with Katie that there were, she had some questions, and one of them was about a job description. I said that was one of the things that I didn't have, because, you know, times have changed, and when I was hiring, it was just do this, and it's kind of morphed over the eleven and a half years, so.
Absolutely.
You're gonna reach out to Chad?
Would you say?
Are you gonna reach out to Chad, see if he wants a job?
Yeah, yeah.
We print it back.
He'll be the first one that comes up on LinkedIn, I'm sure.
You can give us some referrals.
Yeah.
So the job description you have, is it based on information that Chad's already provided, or?
No, this one's just based on what Waterloo was looking for. I can certainly pass it around, and Kristy might have one in her.
Do we just have one copy?
I think we just have two, we might have two copies in there.
I'd like to make more copies.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, you can make more copies if you'd like to. This is exactly what we posted to the four association sites, and a couple of others as well. We certainly don't have to format it that way. We could tailor it to whatever you would like to do, but I brought the exact copies, so you could see what they were working on.
So the same thing they kind of gave to Katie, like, here's what I'm looking for, and she put together the formal job description.
Right.
Board members would be able to reach out directly to recruiters to recommend deletions, inclusion, so.
I think that's a good way to do it.
Will Katie do that?
Well, yeah, and I'm thinking from their, from your guys' perspective, how does that work if you have five members on a board, plus a couple that are ex officio? Is that too many folks that are feeding stuff in, saying, I want you to do this, I want you to do that?
Too many cooks in the kitchen.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of.
So you just went through that similar process with Waterloo.
Right. And I thought that it was absolutely fine. They had, you know, quite a few board members as well. I didn't see an issue with it. It actually was nice to be able to get all the different opinions, and what each person was looking for. But like you said, yes, sometimes it could feel like too many cooks in the kitchen, but I felt like the feedback was actually a lot more helpful to me than just having one person.
Okay. Now, do you provide anything for the interview process? Like, I know you're gonna give us the resume and qualifications and that, but do you, you have comments that, you know, we vetted this person, we thought they were strong in this area? I mean, I assume you interview them.
Yes.
So do you give us some feedback on your interview?
Yes. So when we will submit a candidate to you, we will submit a candidate profile as well. So not only will it have the resume with full contact information, their complete resume, we will also submit what is called a bio or a write-up. So information from us conducting the interview, their career history, salary relocation, why they have left previous employment, we will submit that complete write-up to you. And then to kind of answer your question, yes, we can help facilitate the interview, we can provide you interview questions, we can help come up with those, provide you any of those when you are ready to conduct those interviews.
Sure, yeah, and I think we can conduct the interview, but I just thought, when you do that, if you do something of yours that says, you know, this is why this person got through, and they were really strong, and this answered, versus the ones we kicked out.
Yes. And we can do that, and Katie kind of did that in this last search, provided a spreadsheet, you know, here are the ones I Xed out, and because did not meet the minimum qualifications, or was not a good match because of this, so yes, and she can kind of create a spreadsheet, or however you would like to see that, to provide that additional feedback, yes.
I just remember, I was on the interview team at a school, and, you know, I was following from the community to the school board, to the teachers, and, God, they knocked that interview out of the park, but, you know, different settings.
Everyone has their different opinions, yes.
I mean, they just interviewed different, with different.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's helpful to hear.
Yeah, absolutely. We can provide you our feedback on that.
Yeah, thank you for providing this, I think it's been helpful, the framework, there may be some, I might have a few formatting differences as to, you know, what are the requirements, that must haves versus nice to haves, you know, kind of split it up into a couple sections there, that's what I see.
Right, maybe do more bullet points, or?
Internally with our company, and so, and I think that kind of clears things out. It becomes a lot clearer what you have to do versus what might help your case.
Yes. And I think we have a couple of others as well, that were more the bullet points, this is the format that they approved the final.
Yep, yep.
So Katie probably has a couple of different ones as well, if you're interested in seeing different formatted job descriptions, yes.
Yes.
Further discussion or questions that we have from the board?
Need a motion.
Are we ready for a motion?
Sure. Okay. We can talk about, or you want to do this at, we should talk about that guarantee portion of the board.
Yeah, when do we build the guarantee, part of the contract? This part of the contract that I see right now that we would sign doesn't have a guarantee timeline built into it.
Yeah, so we can absolutely add that in. Now, if you're wanting to sign the contract today, we can write that in and initial it, and then send you an updated hard copy stating that, or if you would like to, say, get a formal one and get that to you, either.
Okay. Okay, so we can use this, that's written as it is today, and modify it, initial it, and sign it, and then we can have an updated copy thereafter.
Absolutely.
Does that work for the board? Okay, right? Yep? Need a motion.
Are we ready for a motion? Sure. Okay. We can talk about, or you want to do this at, we should talk about that guarantee portion of the board.
Yeah, when do we build the guarantee, part of the contract? This part of the contract that I see right now that we would sign doesn't have a guarantee timeline built into it.
Yeah, so we can absolutely add that in. Now, if you're wanting to sign the contract today, we can write that in and initial it, and then send you an updated hard copy stating that, or if you would like to, say, get a formal one and get that to you, either.
Okay. Okay, so we can use this, that's written as it is today, and modify it, initial it, and sign it, and then we can have an updated copy thereafter.
Absolutely.
I need a motion to approve a contract with Burns and Repke to fill the position of general manager for the board.
You want to do exclusive retained or?
Yes, I would suggest the exclusive retained.
Okay, they probably also need to bolt on whatever kind of a guarantee.
I was gonna wait till the discussion.
Okay.
Throw the.
Then goes into the.
I feel like. That guy's baby right there.
He may offer you an amendment, possibly.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we do have a motion for exclusive retained contract with Burns and Repke. Upset me. Okay, discussion. Is there any reason we wouldn't go with just the retained search? And then at least give us the flexibility of running candidates through or not? Even though it's our intent to run everybody through, at least we would have the flexibility of, we run across a golden candidate all on our own and we have no doubts about it. We still have the option of handling that for ourselves. The services are the same either way.
Correct, it's just if you want to go through that process of candidates on your own, correct.
Which we probably will not.
Our fee is, yes, absolutely, the same with either of them.
But we're paying, we're still paying the third upfront, right? Is there more?
It would be an engagement fee, I believe.
One-third of the total.
Correct, yes.
So my question, I come from the world of real estate, so I want everything exclusive. Let's just be clear, but I feel that your answer's gonna be the same as mine in my world, is that if we find somebody on our own, we're on our own to work with that candidate.
To vet it, correct.
Through the interview process, correct.
And so my, my two cents of that is, I think we want everybody to go through the same process, but that's my two cents.
It's still, the first option is just a more flexible option. I'm not saying that we wouldn't run everybody through, but we're saying in case something did show up, we would at least have that option.
Yeah, so what you're saying is that if we do a search internally and you find a good candidate, and do a search ourselves, do find a good candidate, we have the option to decide with the retained to either hire that person or, or say, please contact Burns and Repke with your application.
And I have no intention of suggesting that we do a search, but sometimes things just fall and you laugh. And off chance that would happen.
Okay.
We would have that.
That flexibility?
Saying most likely, unless you see some negatives to what I'm saying, most likely everything's gonna go with you.
So I'm kind of just playing it out of my mind, so, so under the exclusive retained, if an internal employee came to us, we would still kick them in your direction. Under the just plain retained, we would do the same behavior, right?
You would go through the process on your own, correct.
Okay, process on our own, meaning that we would do our own interview, and would that candidate then be held away from you?
So then that would not be our referral candidate, so you would take that candidate through your process on your own. So we would not screen them or do any of that on our own.
Okay.
Correct.
Background checks, there's.
Yeah.
Screens and accuracy of the resume.
Yeah, I'm liking that.
Reference checks.
A little better.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, I mean, I liked it first, I liked it more now.
Yep, so we still have a motion, and second, for the exclusive retained contract.
And good with that.
Are there any amendments you would like to offer to? Do you see that? Real estate brokers are right. I, I.
Who had the second?
I'm sorry.
Brad did.
All right, thank you.
I, I would like to get a guarantee time flying on the contract. The window between thirty days.
So I think since we gave them the exclusive, they can do a six-month for us.
We can do that, absolutely.
I'm gonna ask for nine months, seriously.
Nine-month guarantee, we can do that.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay, all right, so amend, your motion's amended to include a guarantee of nine months. Second, that motion is.
Second, yep.
All right. So the motion we have is an exclusive retained search with Burns and Repke with the contract as presented to Board of Trustees with an amendment to include a nine-month guarantee on the contract.
Sure.
Now we're up for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as amended? Aye. Those opposed, same sign? We have a contract.
Perfect.
So if you're okay with that, Katie can just add that on if you want to sign that today before we leave, and we can just add that in.
Okay, yeah, and please fix the date of the contract.
Yes, absolutely.
So you will, just sort of come back down and meet with the board?
For the interview process or whenever you want us to meet?
To kind of get our feel of what we want, or is that?
I'm just gonna start shooting emails.
So however you want to work that, I mean, if you're prepared to provide us any initial information now to get started, we can start with any initial information you have, compensation range, any must-haves or what you're looking for in a candidate. We can jot some of that down and begin working on a job description. We can absolutely do it via email, we can come back down and meet with you, we can sort of Skype, phone calls, whatever works best on your end.
I think there's some value of meeting as a group rather than, I don't know what you, Kevin and Brad, I just think if we sit down with Brad and we're open an hour.
I would think so.
But the one thing we'll have to keep in mind if we go that route is that we will have to have a twenty-four-hour notice out to the public.
Well, I would just, when's our next one?
Can you do closed session on something like that?
Yeah, we could do it in the closed session, but we would have to post an agenda saying that we're gonna go to a closed session.
Yeah.
It's such a deal that you can, you can start tomorrow reaching out to these other folks, right? And meet with us a week into the process.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, sure.
And no, I would just tack it under a word.
Next regular business, April eighth.
Are you guys free, April eight?
Monday, four P M.
A Monday at four P M.
I'd be available.
All right, so that might work out. We could go into, we could add an agenda item if we wanted to be in closed session, which this discussion.
Yeah, if it gets into what the compensation could potentially be, yeah, I would give you the, the closed session capability.
And in the meantime, between now and then, I know you mentioned wastewater, water, you know, we can put together, you know, some sort of amended job description as well to kind of assist with that before that meeting.
Okay.
Wastewater collection.
Okay. Any questions?
Kind of, kind of, here, persuade.
And wastewater?
Yeah, collection entry.
Collection entry. So you're responsible for pulling the water out, treating it, distributing it, collecting it, treating it.
Treating it again? Thank you for coming down on a Friday.
Oh, sure, yeah, thanks for the invitation.
And you can celebrate because you got a contract.
Sure.
Just like, just like my Friday night. It's only good if you leave with the contract.
Yes.
We can stop now.
Christie, are you thinking?
So I would just.
Would we need to then hear it, four or more like five?
Probably more like five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We get to the end of the meeting.
I see.
Yes, so for you guys, probably more like five, because you'll be at the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
On the, on the April eighth.
Oh, okay.
Unless you want to sit through the regular business.
Okay.
Okay.
Which you are more than one. You're welcome to, but.
Yeah, there's, there's usually ample seating.
Okay, but our number on the agenda would be more closer to five.
You'd be at the end.
Okay, that's fine, but I'm glad that I know that now, and then if I come and.
And I will, when that agenda is built out, I will forward that to you.
Forward that, okay.
So that you have the opportunity to kind of see where, where it falls.
Okay.
What else is on there.
Okay. And then, I'm not sure who I could, well, I could sign this, and then I can pass this to whoever wants to, to sign and data.
I will be the lucky person.
And then, yes, we would get that more into a formal typed document, and I can send that, scan that and send that back.
Sorry.
What I want to do too, if you want to.
Sure. Pass this to you as well.
Okay.
And inside your folders is both myself and Katie's business cards. We should have both our email addresses and contact information.
Is this your copy keeper?
Yep, you can keep one of those copies, absolutely.
I'll put that with the minutes.
Okay.
I'll begin immediately, and then I can keep in contact with Chad, I guess, and if you'd like me to speak to anybody else throughout that time too, I'm available to do that as well.
And the city manager wasn't able to be here tonight, but I know that he's, he's, you know, he'll ask me input.
Yeah.
As well because of the twenty-eighties on.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Wonderful.
Six candidates by Monday.
We'll work through the weekend.
Then we'll work on qualifications after that.
Perfect.
Ready, firing.
Great.
Wonderful, we'll give a certificate.
Yes.
Yes. And it would say, "See you everyone."
Would you like me to leave one for the city manager, just so they have a copy?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And I can drop it off. Thank you.
Okay, all right, now, I am done with this water, would you like me to just leave it?
I'll just do that, I'll take care of it at the meeting.
All right, thanks for the time. Thank you, nice to meet everybody.
Yeah.
We know, we know where to go with wastewater, so. Okay, so now we're on to agenda item number three, consideration and discussion of accepting resignation of current general manager Chad Kuhn.
And this is just to formalize, I mean, it was, obviously it was shared with the board at the March eleventh meeting and then sent out the email afterwards, so this is just to formalize the action.
And there is a signed resignation document, right?
There is a signed resignation document, this is in my personnel file. So I had pulled it out for the purposes of today's meeting, it will go back in my personnel file after today's meeting.
Okay.
Very good. I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Chad Kuhn from the general manager position at Hospice in the municipal water department. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Formalize that.
Thank you.
Okay, now on to agenda item number four, consideration and discussion of appointing interim general manager.
I have had attendance tonight, Matt Van Lake, who's an internal employee. Matt has been employed by the water department for five years now. And he's worked on both the water side, he has his grade-three water treatment license. And then when we formed the twenty-eighty between the water department and the city, he first accepted a position, it was a joint-funded position that was utility locates, and he did that for approximately a year and a half, getting more and more involved in the wastewater side of operations, specifically the collection system, but also helping out with different maintenance issues that would come up. And then two years ago, when the official opening occurred that we had a collection supervisor position, Matt was promoted up to that supervisor position, and so now he is the collection supervisor for us, for the department, and has his grade-two wastewater treatment license, has his grade-two wastewater collection license, and is working on increasing those as he can with, with time and education. Matt has been very helpful in, in the process that is we've blended the departments and especially taking the leadership role to make it his own, but to also help blend the, the city and the wastewater employees. He specifically has two employees under his charge, which are city employees in the collection system. And there's another employee that is a water department employee but is in the wastewater system. So, so he has both of those that he gets to deal with, and I just feel that with the nature of what's going on, that he is the natural candidate at this point for an interim role. And kind of, yes, my roadmap on this is that in the event that there is a gap in between my last day and the first day of the next G M, Matt has the ability and the authority to sign off on journal entries. Like Crystal generates different journal entries every day. He has the ability to essentially do almost everything except change rates of pay for employees or something of that nature. But he would, he would be able to sign off on the state report for the water side that is sent to the V R, go through payroll and obviously still, if, if the board wants some checks and balances just to come in to check on things, I don't see that being a problem, but just so that there's someone here that has that ability and you don't have Crystal trying to track one of you guys down every day to, to sign off on stuff. That, that the power is vested in, in an employee.
Great. I, I think it's of value to have somebody here within the department to have the support. Is this something that you'd be interested in to be the interim general manager?
It is.
Okay.
I do have a few questions, which Chad, you know, I haven't spoken about a little bit. I do have a couple, but nothing interesting. I mean, the challenge is, I believe it's gonna be similar to the way I've learned to this point. I mean, I've got a good grasp on the Tyler system that the city uses for purchasing, doing projects, dealing with engineering, kind of overseeing and making sure we're getting going.
One of the things that's on the back of my mind, also, you know, if there is a gap in timeframe, is we have started a contract with a firm for.
Water main.
Water main replacement, and so I don't want the contractor to be held up until we're able to keep, keep them moving as well because they're gonna be on a time frame, so.
And along the lines of that, the contractor who got that job, K L C, they had phase one and phase two, or phase one and phase two sewer improvements. They worked on a big sewer on the manhole rehab, manhole replacement. So I do have a working relationship with, with K L C already, so kind of, we've worked with the screws, yeah, kind of got a foot印.
There's not much of a question, there's gonna be a gap, why wrong in some of this?
There will be a gap.
There will be a gap.
Yeah. I'm pretty confident in that as well.
You're the last to say.
Me. And, and so, I guess then further into the proposal that what I would do if, if the board would take the action to approve that, we'll just start spending time with Matt in a, in a one-on-one basis immediately as far as what, what some of the day-to-day things look like and, and the processing of whatever those are, so that he. So that, that he has a working knowledge and hopefully that'll help cut down on, you know, the issue we talked about the other night with post-employment consulting. If, if I can do a good job in advising Matt as, as we're working through stuff now, then it, it should help reduce some time that, that I would have to come back and be answering questions.
I, from a board standpoint, have had to deal with an interim, is there anything change pay-wise, benefit-wise during that time?
I would, I would think it would be proven to do something to reward the additional work.
That's what I'm asking, is there a recommendation of what that would be or?
And I don't know if, so last year the board approved the merit pay system. And if, if we looked at the, the top of some of, some of these, like the operations supervisor, if we, if we looked at like a fully funded app or, yeah, there, there are other options there. If, if Matt has some idea on what he thinks it would be worth, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot to. Deal with.
What, what Matt has a current role.
That does have a current role. And it's a busy current role.
And that was kind of one of my questions, I mean, you know, with my current responsibilities, what does that look like with you guys moving forward? Am I going to try to maintain, you know, obviously with purchasing and stuff like that, it's all Tyler-based on the wastewater side. So I'm assuming that that would have to stay with what I do now, but with day-to-day operations, if we look at, I mean, what does that look like to you guys with my current role moving into an interim position with Chad?
That's the balance that's gonna have to be made.
Do you have some capabilities as far as delegation of some of your responsibilities?
That I do.
So I think that would be the first thing that this board would look for, is to enhance the experiences of the folks that you can delegate to.
Yeah. And, and I, I think that. These kind of things, there's gaps in moving people up to different positions, maybe on an interim basis or a full-time basis, that provides an opportunity for the employees to step up into.
Growth.
Maybe a position they want to be in in the future, you know? You know, maybe someday if you're in a different position than currently, where should you be in your position? These kind of opportunities, they are not fun because it gets lean, it gets really lean, but it also provides opportunity for employees to, try and show what positions are they in.
I guess kind of along the line with current responsibilities, currently I'm in weekend rotation. Like this week is my weekend, so I have three days off this week. Is that something we look at maintaining? I mean, it's only once every six weeks, but I just wanted to bring that. And then I guess kind of along the lines of that, on the wastewater set, my hours are a little bit different than Chad's.
Me at like daily hours?
Yeah.
When you start?
Wastewater's seven to 3:30 and we're obviously at 5 here. You know, I do have some engagements that it would be nice to maintain at 3:30, but I am very flexible on that as well.
I expect that on the interim basis here, there's gonna be some flexibility that we need, but we certainly understand that you've built your personal schedule based on the schedule you currently have, so that's reasonable to me.
And I obviously want to spend as much time with Chad, you know, and I said, it's the growth opportunity. Where this goes, I don't know, but it's definitely a, a growth opportunity that I am more like wanting to take.
I think we should move forward with the recommendation and just kind of iron out the, how we compensate at the next board meeting.
Between you and Matt, do you develop a recommendation for compensation for this interim?
And I will have a couple of different proposals that we, we will put forward.
Outlining what responsibilities would be and some of the requirements.
I guess I got probably one more question for you guys, I mean, I've done all the research on the interim position, just kind of get a feel for what I was getting into. I mean, one thing I have seen is that from an interim position, and from there they don't allow to apply for the permanent position. Is that something you guys, do you have an issue if I was to pursue this?
First, no.
No. More is better. We are. I would recommend you have to.
But don't talk to us, talk to the search firm.
Yeah, yeah, so and, and you were here for the meeting and you heard the discussion. We had a couple of options here and, and why did we choose that option?
This is why.
This is why.
Because the other people don't have this opportunity to talk to us and, and I'm just, you know, if you're the best candidate, you'll flow right through.
Yeah.
You know, and so.
It kind of comes down to what you said, but keeping a non-bias.
Exactly.
I think there's a lot of merit in that.
I did not a hundred percent.
There's a perception in the community and I want to. But things happen. And I just don't want that to happen. You should go through the process and be the best and end up sitting here and then that's a feather in your cap. You got through and it wasn't based on anything else, so.
So the motion should probably include approval of what they come up with.
And do we want to clearly state in the motion that the interim position may apply for the full-time position? But that way it's clear to everybody that, that's not a restriction.
I guess, Chad kind of touched on it, but we were working right away trying to get this process started so I can start spending more time with Chad? Or what is, what's that look like to you guys as far as timeline of trying to get it forward?
Well, the interim could start really in another week and we'd have the information we needed at the board meeting on the Monday.
That's true, right? April 8th is.
He can start, he can start it on April 9th and know what his compensation was and know.
And, and I'm gonna tell you that, that I will probably still, because I'm gonna start building out this agenda.
You're gonna start doing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna set him down next week and be doing something because I understand that.
But an official interim position with a salary and compensation could start April 9th after approval of the board, you guys can do your thing.
You can spend as much time on this as you want to.
Because your motion needs a, a process, so I think you can do that.
Any other questions they have now?
No, I think that's pretty much, I mean, a lot of it is my current responsibilities and I guess the one, I know it's hard to answer, but roughly what are you guys thinking on kind of length of time that it takes to build this position?
Why would it no more than 60 days from today? 30 to get it, 30-day resignation or to move an internal?
That was my thought as well, was two months.
It does depend on.
Was there a process?
I agree to be.
I would say we'd be interviewing in 30. Where it goes from there, is it internal, is it somebody putting, I mean, is it a new guy? I mean, you don't know that until we get to that point, but I'd say you're 60 at the most.
Can, can I just offer a suggestion that, so the motion looks something like the approved Matt Benoit as interim general manager effective April 9th until the successful start of the next approved general manager or the next hired general manager or something of that nature? So that in case the 60 days doesn't, isn't enough, that, that it's still.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Just wage to be set at the April 8th board meeting?
Is there anything other than wage that have changed, any benefits change in vacation content?
Not, not without.
Hour structure.
Right.
I guess my next question would be that speaking of where you'd expect, would we go to a salary situation or would we keep it as an hourly position?
Suppose that depends on the proposal that comes upward.
Yeah, I think there's.
It could probably go a lot of directions on that. You could, you could bump up the hourly wage if you wanted to.
Yeah, and this will come, we'll figure out a proposal that way, whether we go with salary based on higher, higher salaries so that we're covering the extra time that's spent, or it's, the wage is a little bit lower, but it's understanding that there will be extra hours put into it. So, but we'll, we'll come up with a proposal.
Yeah.
Yeah, there may be a couple of options to, yeah, and I, I would recommend you, Chad, talk through that to see what would be a couple of options to present.
The board will probably give you the ones current.
I don't provide that information to you to see them.
You got a hundred dollar an hour raise.
What?
It's now we're at a hundred and two.
Hundred and two fifty.
Well, that'd be your fear, if you went to salary, you'd make three dollars an hour. Trust me. Take that hourly and run with it.
Yeah.
So this is, I guess my, my draft here is just a motion to prove Matt Benoit as interim general manager effective April 9th until the start of the next hired general manager wage to be set at the 4/8/19 board meeting.
So move?
Second?
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign?
Getting there.
Getting there.
Okay.
It's almost nowhere to go.
Agenda item number five, updates from members of the board of trustees. Any updates?
Nothing since our last meeting.
Well, that was so long ago. I can't believe there isn't anything.
Seems like it was last week.
Any progress on filling positions?
Yeah, so the, the posting went out for the office position on the city, which also hits. Indeed. When it, when it posted cities, it hits indeed. And then Crystal made contact with the newspaper to get an ad in there. And it's, I can't remember how, if you, if that one was hit monster too or not, but I'll bet today there's already been 20 applications that have walked through the door. So. Oh, yeah. Yes. Yeah, and, and, and some of them are just resumes, some of them are just applications, some of them are actually reading the ad and bringing them up.
It's both part of hiring process.
And the other, as far as the other one, still the, I had another, I had a resume coming in about 15 minutes before the board meeting, sorry. And so that, that stuff I'm, I'm still reviewing. I'm looking to do a couple of things internally beginning of next week, which will help me focus direction on what we do.
Any other questions from the board? I don't have any. All right, agenda item number six, most adjourned?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign? We are adjourned.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chad.